I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I second it.
Aye.
Do you need to know what I'm doing first? Do you want it right now?
No, because the next deal is approve agenda.
Okay, sorry, I don't do this very well.
Or do I should approve it first and then agenda?
Okay, we could, I can tell you. I'm making a motion to add for the women's group to also have the outside of City Hall for their vendor show on August 5th. That's the first thing. The second thing is to put Misty Murphy on the Park and Rec Committee. The committee is only for a year and we haven't had anybody since. It ran out in January, so I would like to throw them.
Mark and Ryan.
Park and Rec, please.
Well, I have a. Motion to approve this. I motion to approve this. You approve the agenda.
Yes.
Aye.
Do we need a second? I'll second if we need a second. I didn't.
They voted, didn't they?
Yeah, I didn't hear a second. He voted to approve it, I just didn't hear a second. Everybody said aye.
I second it.
Thank you.
Did you hear that?
I did, thank you. Speak up.
Approved the agenda.
Amendment.
Aye.
I approve.
Aye.
Aye.
I feel like we muddled through that. I don't know.
Okay, who approves the agenda?
Okay. Approved, I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I second it.
Now, everybody else?
Aye.
And we're gonna plug in.
It's gonna be a rough go.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Are we, Terry?
Approve with consent agenda.
I make my.
No, you gotta.
I make a motion to approve with consent agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Over. All right. Concerning the lion's club stuff that's in the green building.
Yes.
Will it, will we be allowed to keep it there? Do we need to move it? What's the status of that? Back when the old city, old community center was in operation, there were two, there's two storage complexes, one for the Lions, one for Legion. And we were assured that there would be a place for us in the new building, which there's not.
Terry, how much stuff do you have?
We have two freezers that we use part, part of the time. We have two grills, a gas grill. All the supplies that we use for pancake breakfast, coffee pots, plants, silverware, that kind of stuff.
And how many times a year do you get into the building?
Depends. This month with a fundraiser coming up the Saturday of Memorial Day, between then and Memorial, they probably need to get into it five or six times. And then we're again before the, before the fundraiser at the late on Labor Day.
Okay.
How much of that stuff is outdated? And how much of that stuff, like the pops up in there, is gonna be any good? And if it blows up, what are we gonna, who's gonna clean it up?
The pop has been moved off of the fire cabinet. There is one freezer in operation. There is. What about that few long, long grills? Nope. There's two electric grills in there and a gas grill. And a four by, or three by eight set of shelves that we store everything on at the end.
Okay, let me ask you this. You know, we were given that building where the lock and cooler is for the school down our old school grounds. Part of that building is storage. Would you be able to use that for your stuff?
We weren't given that building.
We weren't given that building. Well, I went to see the superintendent, me and Jake, and Wendy Fellowsky. They got that meeting.
Well, the old superintendent told me.
That's, that's fine. They, they told us there's nothing in range. We went to see them about three weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
Because they still use that for?
Because it's kinda in the center of a park out there.
Yeah, okay.
We would have.
Okay, well, it's my understanding that Jefferson Telecom doesn't want the building. They can't use it as that for it.
Yeah, we'll get, Laura will tell a little bit when we get to new business on that. I think we need to talk about this at, at some point, I, I don't know.
I would say maybe if we had to get some of the old school board members, maybe somebody remembers actually what was said and could tell that superintendent. But other than that, you know, he's looking at, oh, there's $30,000 there.
I mean, they have board meeting and that.
We asked, go in there and talk to him about the building.
I think Mark.
Oh, I don't know.
Renslow talked to Sean Demoss. And I think Sean Demoss and Mark kinda had something figured out. And then it's gonna be a, kind of a hole to see what was gonna happen because they knew that a new superintendent was coming also. So I think, I'm sure that it wasn't talked about at a, at a board meeting or anything. It was just kinda, you know, let's see what happens.
And so I told Sean that he needed to move his area because he wasn't, that he continued to move it. It wasn't ours.
I say, look, I think we're gonna need to have a little more discussion on this because it also will, what happens with a future conversation, like you said. So let's just, we'll have to get back to you, Terry, about this.
Yeah, but the point I wanna bring up is if the Lions Club was told that we would make room for, that we would have storage room, just because it's a different council, we, we need to honor that. Because just since I've been on the council, Terry and the Lions Club have written grants and gotten us trees for the city that didn't cost us anything. And we get upset when people don't like the schools in town. There's no agreement. We get upset when people do that to us. And I don't want us doing it.
Same, that's what happened in Legion Hall. That was an agreement the town made with Legion and the Lions Club.
Well, it's so convenient that we don't keep track of these agreements and stuff.
And I just need to keep it in writing.
Absolutely. And now that we've got Wendy, who seems to be doing a fantastic job. I mean, we need to have this recorded so that, you know.
We'd like to get to the bottom of that building, but whatever.
But Terry, you know, we'll figure something out for you guys.
During the, at least during this month where we've got the fundraiser coming up the end of the month, would it be okay if I had a key that, that we could get into it after hours, weekends?
Yeah, I think we can let you, we can loan you a key to use.
Up until the lock will change. I have, I've had a key since 2019.
That's how you move stuff in, though, that we didn't know about. And that was part of the problem is because everything was just moved in. And there was no, hey, is it all right? Do you guys have plans for this back room? We didn't know about it. And then when I first talked to you, you said it was fire department stuff and Lions Club stuff. And it's not, it's all Lions Club.
A lot of the stuff was dated.
Some of the syrup is old and, and that kind of stuff in there. And, and that was, that was the problem. It was just put in there without anybody even knowing that it was in there.
I don't remember who, who said it was okay. I did ask, but I can't remember who it was. At this point, I, I think that's, you know, not the important part. It's where, where we go from here. Whether we'll be allowed to stay in there or we need to move it. And then during the next three weeks.
Again, we'll, Terry, we'll talk about it. We'll come up with a game plan that will work probably for all of us. But right now, I don't think we're in a position to say yes or no or anything. I think we need to have a little more discussion and thought of it. So this can be, I don't know, the table that are put on.
Well, you said I was the most, can you have it?
And I think we already said that. Didn't, you already say? I mean, for the temporarily can have it while you're doing a fundraiser, yes.
Yeah, one thing, one of the whole statements I wanna make is, you know, in the 30 years that I've been on Lions Club here, I'm estimating that we have donated for city projects somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000. Including the carpet that's in this room. The rebuilt the shelter house, contributed to the Christmas light project. We provided both basketball hoops as a pool, other items for the pool. So, you know, that's just something I wanna make. Plus, a lot of private things, people, fiber lines, hearing aid, right? You know, in the last, I'm supposed to pick up trees and water it, but in the last year, we'll have planted over 120 trees this time. We'll take care of it. We'll try and.
Yeah, I can speak for you, there's more time to talk about it.
Okay. Moving along, new business. Any other comments, Tom? Yes.
Well, speed.
I just have one question. Everybody does a great job in the town looking nice. But I kinda see at the recycle place, what is the purpose of the railroad ties? Because the grass grows up this tall? Do we need to leave those there so it'd be easier for the people that mow or just mow through it? Is there a blue zone for our ties are there, but it's not getting weed?
They were originally put there to hold water and water and stuff. I had to keep them down. Before, before the city ended.
I assume that. It's just like now you buy, buy this like grass from it, it needs to be thrown in the ocean. I for a few times, like, we need, we need to, I just brought a little weed here. But it's really not my place to do a weed.
So what do we need to do, move them, or?
Well, we gotta figure out how to make it available. We can add or have something.
Why can't, yeah, why can't Rod, the dude we hired, now that we know it's a problem, why can't we just put it on the work kitchen? We need a panel. Wouldn't too much, would that be enough?
Like, I just like it to be, I don't have a problem with that. I just said it's looking shabby, you guys are doing so great, cleaning their panel up.
Are you worried about a snake?
No, it's like, I'm gonna go and kill it.
Any other comment?
Right, you need some.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
New business. Vote and approve Jefferson Telecom to bring fiber optics to town and vote and approve placement of their building where they are, while they are here. Laura?
Yes, we had a follow-up meeting. And their engineer does not think the first building is what they want to use for, will not work. Behind the library is not an option either for a building, just for lots of reasons. So I guess, one, I want to just make a motion that we are going to allow Telecom to come into our town.
I would like to make a comment.
I will let you.
Have they approached them? Have they seen any other places that they'd like?
Okay, yes, that was my step two, I'm just a step one.
Okay. So there are other places than on Main Street that they could put their building?
There are other places, yes.
That will work for them?
Yes.
Okay, because this is gonna sound like a probing record to some people, but your votes. I really don't want it placed over here, even though it's gonna be behind the billboard. I think that is a main piece of property in town, which we only have really two, which would be the one grocery store and this one. And we don't know if, if we're lucky enough to get something in town, if that building will be in the way. Are we giving the space to them?
Okay, here's the deal. Right now, we just think your vote, whether we're, we're gonna allow them to come into town. That's one. And two, we need to tell them where we want to have it. Then once we get to, let's, I'm just gonna say, we decide we wanna put it right out this window. I know we're not, so we'll just play along with it. Then we're gonna, we get to decide, do we rent it, you know, do we lease it, do we sell them? It's kind of, it'll, it's in, it's, it'll be in a contract. So we just, we'll have to decide. This right now is the very first step in this. They can't move forward till they hear that, yes, we are going to allow them in. And yes, we have a spot for the building.
Okay, moving ahead with my other concerns. I think the building, the picture they showed us, I think it's ugly. That brown building. At least Windstream put grit on half of the front of their building. To me, to be quite honest, it reminded me of an outcast.
One thing, have you done the town, have you researched it? Did Windstream buy it or lock it?
I don't know that. I don't know that. And the last thing before we vote on this is, it took us three times, and I'm saying we, but it was you or her, asking them what they were gonna charge before they would finally admit what they were gonna charge, which kinda turned me off. And if they would get, I think there's approximately 250 houses in town. So if they would get a third of those, which would be 80, and they charged the minimum amount of $70, that's $5,600 a month that they're making, or almost $68,000 a year. And I would like to see that they give something back to the city.
Okay, so here's the deal. That's, that, once we get this contract, we can negotiate any terms we want. That's just not something we do right now because they don't even know we're gonna allow them to come into the town. Now, I again am gonna make a motion that we allow them to come into the town.
Well, I think we oughta know that stuff before we allow them to come into town.
If they don't come into town, it's my understanding, what they're gonna do is they're gonna put their building outside of town. And then we're not going to get this new fiber optics. Because they don't have to put it into town. They have to, they're doing it for country people. And so they're going north to Dana and south to Ripley. And so they're coming into town because they're already here. And that is my understanding on this whole thing. So if, if we say no, you know, you can't come into town, then they're just gonna go around us. And then everybody here in town who's Windstream doesn't work as fast as what they need it to work is probably gonna be knocking on your door.
So if that's the case, and we go ahead and we vote up that they can come in, who wants to stop them and say, well, we're still not gonna give you anything? Because we'll just go ahead and put it out in the country.
You know, private building in the country, it's still there.
Well, I guess part of the problem is if you talk to people around town that don't have enough Wi-Fi, high-speed internet, thank you, to do this, most people, it's my understanding, are pretty excited about this. And if you have children that are gaming and trying to do reports and you're trying to livestream something on TV, that they don't have enough energy to do it with, with what we have in town. I don't know any other way to do this, do you?
I just, you know, I think they, they got it over us, you know? And I, I think out of respect for the community that they ought to at least offer some free service for our own buildings. It's not like we're asking for a percentage of what we make.
Right. All this can be in the contract. This is just to get things started. Yeah. Let them get, let them get.
And it's about half the price of what we're spending on. Oh, no. It's pretty close to $70, one's here is $90, so it's a little more than half.
Well, it depends on what kind of speed internet you get. I mean, that's just it, it's not cut and dry. It depends on what speed internet you have and you're gonna have, gonna get. And there's a whole, all kinds of package deals. And they're working on a brochure to bring all the information together that they will send out and let everybody in Grand Junction know what the package deals are. They're just updating and upgrading their pamphlets. So they can't hand them, they're not gonna hand them out now because they won't be correct. So they're waiting till they have those.
Are we gonna see one before we decide the final thing?
We have to have a contract anyway that goes through our attorney, but then is sent to them and then their attorney. Believe me, we don't want to just roll over and play dead on this. But we are not gonna throw it out there right now, all of our thoughts, ideas, plans, and that kind of stuff, because right now is not the time.
All we're doing is allowing them to come into town, a future witness.
Right, it has nothing to do with, that is correct. That is correct. No future negotiations. This is just where are they gonna put the building so that they know? And then, yes, they can, you know, we're gonna allow them to come into town. If we don't allow them to come into town, they'll, they'll just go around us. And then, and then we're not gonna get it. So, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna step outside and tell everybody, no, we voted, no, you're not gonna have it, because I think that people are not gonna be happy with our decision.
Okay. I just wanted my comment.
Right, yep, that's, that's fine.
So we've heard Mickey's comments. I guess I need to hear from Kenny and I need to hear from Jake.
I, I've got no comments other than it's not gonna be as, I don't think it's gonna be as cheap as we think it's gonna be.
Well, we're getting high-speed internet. So it's not getting here.
I, I know, but.
It's apples and pears.
Yeah. But it's, it's still, it's a pretty, it's pretty expensive.
It might be, but if you had, if you had a couple kids in your own business, you're gonna walk that.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you don't have to.
You negotiate, and you talk to them, I shouldn't say negotiate. But the government is helping.
They're getting some help.
I'm, I'm for it, I just wanted to mention that, I think.
Okay. Jake, what's your opinion on this?
Yeah. I'm good with it.
Okay.
So I'm gonna again make the motion that we're gonna allow them to come into town and give us high-speed, they're gonna hook, hook up the fiber optics for high-speed internet.
I.
What about the, excuse me?
I'm getting to that.
Oh, okay, it's a two-part, sorry.
So now the next part is, yes, they feel like behind what you call the sign is, would be an ideal location, it's got the space for them. Mickey doesn't like that idea. Anybody else have any other thoughts on where else it could be? I don't feel like we should put it at the school lot because we don't know what's gonna go on down there. With, with one, the building is already there. Obviously, we had that conversation. So if we, where else do we want to entertain the idea of putting it? Or, okay, do we even need to, just because Mickey doesn't like it, sorry Mickey, doesn't mean we can't vote to still put it there.
I'm fine with it behind the sign. I'm fine with them coming in. I'm fine with it behind the sign on the other side of the, the block building.
Well, that sign will probably be drawn someday.
But it's, you know, it's clear back, so the front part of the lot, if somebody wanted to build something.
Remain access will be.
Do we know how big this building is gonna be?
Both of us.
Isn't it like 10 by 10? Yeah, yeah, 10 by 10 or 10 by 12.
10 by 12 or something like that. So it's not, it's not a huge building and they're, it's not as big. It's not as big as it has, as the area needs to be because most, if they were gonna build this somewhere else, they'd have to have a generator. Well, you don't need a generator because we have one that the light plant runs and gets going for us. So they don't have to have this extra space for a generator. It has to be hooked to the building and fenced in and that sort of thing. So that makes the space.
Has to be something that those people do.
Possibly. But the, the light plant gives everybody electricity with that generator.
Right, well, it's, we'll, we'll get down and bring it out and stop it.
So I, so you're making a motion, I didn't vote on the first one, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were two-parting it.
I'm just, just, we're just discussing, I, nobody's made a motion about putting it there. I'm just saying, if somebody can throw it out there.
I'll make a motion to put it east of the block building behind.
Agreeable to it, right? They are.
Yeah, they're agreeable to that, yes. I will make a motion to put it there.
Aye.
I'll second it, the ayes.
No.
And I, put me down as aye on the first part, too, to allow them to bring it to town. I don't think I voted because I was waiting for the whole package.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, my, my bad.
And I'm voting.
Moving right along. Vote and allow Women's Club to use the pool area and a lot for vendor fair on August 5th. Jake?
Yeah. This is one member would like to have an area to use for vendor fair, for fundraiser. They might use the pool area. And then you said something about.
The green space.
Yeah, the green space out here, too, for, for their fundraiser for vendors.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote and approve Green County School to use a kitchen again this year for the summer lunch program.
Right, yeah, they, they used our community center, I don't know how many years, for two months in the summer to prepare a lunch this toward Junction and Ripley. And last year, we raised, the rate was 1,000, it's 1,400 now?
250.
250, okay. And so, I, I like that, that we charge them because if something goes wrong, which happened this last year when the ovens quit working. And it cost us $1,200 to get the ovens working. We've got some money there. So I think it's a good deal. And I think we oughta let them use our, our community center to prepare the lunches again this year.
Mickey, when did it go from, just last year did it go from the 1,400 to the 250? So it was just last year where it stood.
So you're making a motion?
Yeah, I moved that we approve Green County School to use or Green County Center.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Vote and approve fiscal 2023 day, 2024. Wendy?
You guys all have a good budget. I've worked on it. A lot better than last year. But I need you guys to vote and approve on this, I feel.
And I would just say Mary has helped you with this to make sure that, because she's more familiar with everything and went through it, so. Somebody wanna?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote and approve a regulation to increase the fire department and the city.
Has everyone in the fire department read the resolution? And is everybody in agreement? Then I, I have a motion to, to approve it.
I second.
Aye.
Discuss on what to do with the Grundon property.
I had somebody approach me on what we were gonna do, asking what we were gonna do with the Grundon property now that it's cleaned up. They're interested in purchasing it. Does, I guess we've never moved forward from what we're gonna do with it now that we own it. And I don't even know, do we have to put it up for bids? Do we just, I mean, can we just say this is how much we're selling it for? And do like a real estate? Do like a real estate?
Say some bids, but we can have the, prior to saying no to the bids, we don't like.
Let's start with the minimum.
Yep, we could do that.
How many lots are down there? There's gotta be more than just.
Well, that's, that's all in one.
Rod says four, four.
There's three or four.
Three or four, okay.
That stuff on the other side is a totally different thing. That's his grandfather's. On the other side of the alley, that has nothing to do with.
The alley.
On the other side of the alley to the, to the west.
There's three, okay.
But the, it's west of Grundman's now. That's his grandfather's. And then the stuff that's out there is in the county. That's Grundman's.
But everything that's cleaned off there now, and Rod says it's three lots.
I don't think we want, well, unless somebody wants to pay it, and that all broke up, that costs money to do that over there.
So I.
Sell it all as one lot. But we got, what, fourteen grand in it now?
Well, we had thirteen to have it, the house torn down and hauled away and all that. How, what do you, how do we sell this, Jerry?
No, no, I just, I was hoping to ask how much the city has in it right now. About the, I doubt if you did that much, I would never mind.
About fifteen. That's with the attorney's.
Did you get the tires all the way yet? Thank you.
So probably.
And side note, we can thank the Betterment Committee for that.
Yes.
They got the tires, they got, they organized getting them taken away, and that was all on them, so thank you.
Thank you to them.
And that other property by the Methodist Church, you know, we had about nine grand in that, and it sold for five million.
I.
Right, but that's, so you can see it's not a proper.
No, I, I didn't expect it to be, but I think, I think we need to have a minimum.
Right.
If it's three to four lots, typically, how much does a lot go for? Will this potential account?
So we, I guess we need to just look into this, but everybody kinda needs to be thinking about what we wanna do with it. I mean, if we're gonna sell it, what do you?
Put it back on the tax rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have it down to, to vote on it this time anyway. If you think about it and, and decide, and we can put it on like next month, what we're gonna do with it, figure out what we're gonna ask for, how we're gonna do it, sealed bids or however we have to.
Well, I, I want us to ask a minimum.
Right, yeah. Not just take the lowest bid. We've gotta, we've gotta recoup something. So that's, that was all the discussion that I had, unless somebody else has something on it.
Does somebody wanna get an evaluation of that somehow?
That'll cost us.
Well, some.
An evaluation?
Some roofers will do up for.
Oh, really?
Oh.
Will do up for nothing. Some.
If we found a.
Just got an idea.
Okay. Not that I know of.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Vote and approve on Walters' contract for the next three-year committee.
Yeah. We really don't have a choice. I, I tried to find another hauler so that we could do a comparison. I called Ogden, and Ogden lets their own residents decide who they want to haul their trash. And they've got Waste Management coming out of Ames, and they've got Walters out of whom. I don't think that's a good idea for Grand Junction. I think we need to have one hauler. We don't need two garbage trucks running up and down our old streets. Walters does a good job.
We've had him for a long time. He gives us those bins we need for cleanup day. I don't know if he gave them, don't we have to thank him?
landfill is what we pay him for.
No, we don't, we don't pay for those bins.
Oh, yes, the toders for.
At one time he doesn't send them for free.
Yeah, I think he gives us a, a couple of them. I think this is in the contract, he'll give us two of them for you. You know, the only thing I wish he would do is for people that don't fill their toter every week, I wish he'd give us a discount. And I did ask him about that, and he said, you can't do that. So those of you that fill your toter bowl complain.
Which makes sense, because it takes, it takes the same amount of effort on their part, whether your garbage can is full or not.
Yeah, the thing is, the landfill charge is less, because my, my.
Yeah, but.
In Hawaii, you get a choice of three sizes. You don't save a lot of money, but at least you've got a choice. But he's not giving us that choice. We don't have another hauler. And I think he's asking a ten percent increase. And the thing about him was, when gas prices went outside, he didn't come back and ask for more money. He stayed with us, and so I think we need to stay with him this time. So I think we would be approved Walters' contract for another three years.
Aye.
Vote and discuss to remove section nine point four uniforms out of personal policy and approve resolution twenty point three dash five oh eight.
Okay. I was just reading through the personnel policies, and I see in there that at one time the city of Grand Junction provided uniforms from a uniform supply company, and then would pay all the costs with getting them cleaned and all that kind of stuff. And I just would like to see this removed, because we don't do that, and there's no sense in having it in there. Wouldn't wanna mislead anybody that are going to do that. So I would like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash five oh eight dash oh one to remove the nine point four in the uniform section of the personnel manual.
I'll second.
Is there any special regulations for removing ordinances and things like that? I don't know.
Yeah, it's kind of resolutions.
Huh?
I just have to give a resolution.
Yeah. And ordinance is different, because that's, that's a law. This is just a resolution. So we should be right.
You bet I asked. Now, the women's city hall, Paula Women's Club for the city hall, you wanna vote on that?
We already did.
I thought you just approved it, approved the agenda.
We voted on it, and Jake, we voted here.
Yeah, it was under B, and the women's club gets down at the pool area for their vendor show and outside here, and then the inside is, is a separate thing, because it's always been separate.
No, it was a little problematic.
Yeah, it, it was a, a little bit of a goat rope. So we're on aye. I didn't know if you lost your place, just helping.
You have a sitting there patiently.
Yes.
Oh, vote and approve on Thorpe hooking onto the sewer for his building next year home.
I think you should just use a typo. Because, you know, we got lagoon problems anyway, and I think one less hookup is just gonna save us money in the long run. There you go. Where is this?
No, I'm here to ask for approval. I haven't decided what I'm gonna do yet, but I have a couple of different things in mind, but one of them was, I have a two-piece modular that I purchased behind my son-in-law, and I'm thinking about putting it behind my house north of the. I talked to Tommy Beeman, 'cause he worked on that sewer that comes out of where Stowley lives and then Radke's and Life Link's. He said it's like an eight-inch tile. And I asked him, but there was plenty of, plenty of room there to have another house. And he, he thought it would probably be the best thing for it, because the more, more you got going now, then it's the better, so.
Yeah, is there more than much water going down?
No, no, but that's, you know.
Now, you.
But we're gonna be having Radke's, we're working on it, so we'll have it back in order probably by fall, but.
So you're, you.
But I'll, I'll just, we're gonna put the house north of my building out there, and then we'll run the sewer, and then the water's over there that comes off to a fire line that, you know, that goes to my building, and then we'll just hook onto the water line and the sewer line in the same ditch, so.
So the city doesn't have to put any sewer at all?
No, no.
You just give.
No, it's just, yeah, it's my responsibility to, to hook up to that mantle there, so. But I just wanted approval, and if there was a hookup fee involved other than the building permit?
I think there is, but I don't think we're gonna follow. I think it's like five dollars or something.
Well, when I hooked that house up there, I got a little gupped, because I didn't get a sewer permit. And then I came out.
Your, your sewer, your guy digging to get the permit to be there.
So what permits does he need then? If we approve this, does that cover it?
When he does, when he does that, oh, I got stacked stuff in there that Rick, Rick Charlin did all this, looked it all up. The guy that does the digging has to, first of all, come and post a bond or show, show his insurance. And I think with the five-dollar from years ago permit, we don't, nobody will charge for that. But the guy that dug it has to dig it, and when he gets it dug, then there has to be inspection, to see if it's okay.
Yeah, and, and nobody knew at that time, you know.
So all he needs is the digging permit. He, his guy has to show proof of insurance, and then it has to be, right, and then it has to be inspected. And that's it.
Is this somewhere in the office? So like Wendy would have her hands on it and then, because obviously you're whatever we're building.
When his, when his guy comes to town, he, he does it himself, and you gotta come in and say, have proof of insurance.
I'm asking you, is it in the office where Wendy can have her hands on it and be able to say, okay?
I have no idea where it's at.
Who inspects it?
Well, I've been, I've done it here. We have Kelly do it, he's, he probably doing it anyway, who knows?
He, he might be doing the work, you know.
Okay. Did, you have everything that you, you understand everything that you need? All you need now is an answer from us?
I just wanna know what kind of permits or whoever's gonna do it, what they need to come in if I decide to do it. I'm not a hundred percent sure that I'm gonna do it.
He needs a permit, and he needs proof of insurance, and Kelly's got both, if you have to.
Yeah.
Okay. I. I'd make a motion to hook up to the sewer, even though I think it would be, you know, money saved if we don't have to have all these people, but I'll, I'll make a motion to let him hook up to the sewer.
Aye.
Aye.
There'll be a cornfield right there.
There you go.
I'm just saying. There you go. It'll be fine. Okay.
Okay. Mayor? I guess I don't have anything to say.
Did you have something on Misty?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I, I.
That's what I was getting to back.
Well, you, you've indicated women's club, and that was something totally different. It's Park and Rep. I would like to make a motion to put Misty Murphy on the Park and Rep Committee. Thank you. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were trying to get at. And so I would like to make a motion to, to put her on. She's been a lot of help. She's already doing some painting down to the swimming pool and that kind of stuff with it. Thank you.
No.
Thank you, Jake.
Yes, thank you, Jake, for explaining that. I.
Dallas.
I have a couple of things. The flag that we have right now was donated to us by Dallas and Jane Edwards. So thank you to them for our current flag. The playground equipment is in, and just about any time you drive by, and it's nice out, there are kids, there, yeah, and they're having a great time. Thank you to Niece for hauling our rubber mulch back for us and for the light plant guys, and Keith and Jake for helping us get it all smoothed out down there. The swimming pool, the kiddie pool, Kelly and Dean worked on that and got it fixed, so we should have a baby pool, kiddie pool, whatever this year. And we still need lifeguards, so put that word out there that we need those. So.
I need, what is the hinges on that one gate that goes to the pool?
Yeah.
Is there someplace we can get hinges for that, new ones?
I don't think.
Best company who, I could, we could probably. Probably get it at the Nards or someplace, where they have that fencing material at.
Don't they have it at the lumberyard over in Jefferson? Wouldn't they have that there? The fencing? Stuff?
But it's.
Is it hinges that are broke?
Yeah, that's what's, that's what's wrong.
Okay.
That one was spring-loaded, and the spring broke.
Oh, okay.
And then somebody tried to lift it off.
Okay. We'll have to look at that.
I would like to make a suggestion that in the future, our full-time employees, when they're going to go on vacation, and they turn it up hand-wrapping and request saving the amount of time that they're taking off, so that we know. There was a little bit of confusion, the amount of time Rod took off, and if we had it in writing, definitely things would have been easier.
Good idea.
Anybody else?
Jake, anybody? You got anything, Kenny? Okay.
Except that guy's gonna be in town any tomorrow.
The street guy?
That guy.
Where's he out of?
Four times. But he was recommended to us by Tiefel, so. And Rod talked to Tiefel, he talked him over there, they seemed to think he's good, so. So that's all we can afford.
Well, I'm just curious.
Wish we could afford more, but.
And we're working on trees. That's another thing, we're back into trees, hot and heavy, so.
Let's take this one.
That does everything. Okay.
Anybody else? Rod, street maintenance.
Um, Rod, I have a question. Have we had any more, got any more ordinance stuff, like, um, let's get rid of some houses or trailers that are?
No, I think we were gonna wait on that, and just we wanted to talk about it, see what we were gonna do, since it costs money on Grundmans.
To see, like on that one on Main Street?
Well, there's a couple trailers that are.
Well, we can't really, like, we like to take that trailer out there by Rod's, up there, and maybe, but if we do, we're gonna get stuck with it.
Okay, not a camper.
Oh, it's a camper, it's a camper trailer we live, but that's the reason we haven't got rid of it.
You're talking mobile home. Um, okay, mobile home, thank you. I'm talking about the mobile home that's down by John Deere Barnes, and one that's, I don't know, down whatever road.
You probably wanna run into some of the same problems, because it's got the same type of material that is a camper.
If, if, I guess, you know, if you wanna move forward, then send him forward on that, you know, I don't, I don't know where to.
The attorney has that property. He, he was trying to locate the female, that's the problem, is that male and female are separated.
And he couldn't find her?
Can't find, it's either her or him. I have to get back with him, so I haven't talked to him.
Okay. Cause her folks live here in town.
And then what about Main Street, uh, Watsons that's burned down? When did that burn down, the next nice store? Do we wanna tackle that one? That's another one that we.
They need more ISO than brandels up there by the hotel.
Brandels has been cleaned up a little bit, though.
You see the law files there?
It might be, but I'm just saying, it's cleaned up some. It's not like it's sitting just as is. I'm just thinking there's three spots right now that I can think of that maybe need some ordinance type, way of attention.
The, the woman that lived there, I've been told that she lives south of town.
Yeah.
Oh, that, and Watsons?
Yeah.
That house won't keep the rain on it. The second house. The second house, they use, I don't know, they used to live there, but I think it's sold. I think, sold again.
We, we need to do something. I mean, there's enough property there, we can have three lots.
So I guess, you know, tell them what you want them to move forward on, um.
You're talking looking at an across the country, you know, on burnout, so it's.
I'm talking about Watsons, but, but the one that's on the corner there, that was gonna be, the fire department's gonna use it as a.
This one down here?
Yes.
I talked to him, he's gonna start tearing that down, so.
Are, are we gonna run into the same problem that Watsons with that second house? With insulation and.
Probably.
The way we, as possible.
Probably, but here's the deal, if we, we gotta remember we have that Betterment Committee that is, I mean, they've really helped us with Grundins. Let's use that resource to see what they're available, but like.
That house has been like that for the last forty years.
Yeah.
The one that's, the one that's.
Yeah, 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 like, well, I guess, like, are we just.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we had cleaned up.
We just talked about four properties that are ISOs, let's be honest, they're ISOs. And if the one guy is gonna seriously tear that one down, then that's progress, you know, that's a step in the right direction. These two trailers, mobile homes, I, I feel like those, we need to figure out what we can do to get rid of them because if I live by them, I wouldn't like it.
Well, and I think Joan, last year Joan and the other neighbor, they mowed and tried to keep it looking as nice as they could and I mean, that, that, that's not what I think we're asking.
So the one is on Main Street down there and the other one is on Fifteenth, south of the Catholic Church?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you got that, Rod?
And I'm wondering who owns that because Melissa Kraft has a vehicle park there that used to be parked when she lived down in.
The person that used to own it is that guy from Perry that owns these other houses and a few other places in town. His wife was a schoolteacher one time.
McFarland?
Yes, McFarland, that's who it is. If he still owns, he does.
So here's the deal, I think we should move forward with whatever we need to, I mean, yeah. I, I think those four are a good, good start, yes, and they're, they're ISOs, they really are.
You wanna, you're gonna find fire department, you gotta do it. I'd like to ask the fire department, it'd be a good time to burn the company, we don't want to like get too big like what's before. Okay, well, if you think of a good date for us, no, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, I.
We got some old oil we can throw on.
I. Yeah, old tires, that'd be great. I see, um, that you guys are going to the Bell Tower Festival. How many trucks and stuff are you taking? You're taking three? Okay, all right, good enough.
When, when is that? Should I next weekend? June ten.
Oh, June ten, okay, sounds good.
Anybody else?
What, they was, the fire department was talking about, uh, seeing if they could get that tanker over here when they're, to keep it over here for a while when they're doing the cleaning of the water tower in case they need some extra water. What am I, what use? I'm gonna talk to Jack, see if I can get that done.
Do you need to store it someplace then or just? Okay.
Sitting that, we're sitting that shed out there at the sewer plant, but that's kinda long, it's now, it's too long.
Do, but if you at least need to park it someplace where it's locked up, you know, you're welcome.
Person in our role, but Jerry's long standby.
Okay. Okay, good enough, you got it handled. Okay.
Is that it?
I think so.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.